Can you please do that, because that would be funny.[2.31][2.31][laughter] Okay. Okay, can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. The meeting to order at 7:05 PM. Okay. First item on the agenda is item number three, public comment. Is there any public comments?
Yep.
Please come up, state your name and address for the record. Into the microphone, please, Mr. Flynn.
That's Michael Flynn, 85 Skokelat Street, Seymour, Connecticut. I've noticed those fence rails leading up to where the Marine Corps League has its headquarters with the old Lutheran churches by the Episcopal Cemetery. If you go up, they still aren't tightened, as far as I know. You've got fence rails over here on this street that overlooks downtown Seymour. If you go down that, you'll find that they're all in the central part of the fence. There's about six or seven of them that are bent and terribly out of shape. We need servicing.
Okay. Which road again? I'm sorry.
Right over here, that side street that overlooks downtown Seymour. What do they call that?
Humphrey Street.
Humphrey Street, yes. I've noticed, if you go down Humphrey Street, you'll find six or seven fence posts that should be straightened out. I mean, somebody goes through there, they'll go right down into the railroad tracks. Thank you.
Thank you. Rory, can you make a note to follow up with Dennis tomorrow? Please note Nicole's arrival at 7:06.
Sorry.
It's okay. Yes, you do, Mike.
Mike Kearney, 72 Mountain Road. I just wanted to comment on the service on Saturday. I want to thank the board and the town for participation in the service. I think we had an excellent turnout.
Bless you.
Couple minor glitches. I think we need a new sound system for that, for some of those services. And again, I think the Randall family was very pleased, and now we have a lasting monument found in that field. The other thing you made a mention of at the end of that service, and I just want to know if you were going to reiterate or say anything about it, is stones for French Park. I didn't get all the details. I was behind you, and I heard you say something about the stones for French Park, the bonding and the release and all that, so. Because once that is made public, we have to get on our horses and start collecting names and doing the footwork to get the bronze plaques in place and verify names in two 14s in the whole man yard. So, again, I want to thank the board. You guys did an excellent job.
Thank you. I'll answer that during my first selectman's report. Is there any other public comments? Is there any other public comments? Hearing no other public comment, we will close public comment. Item number four, approved minutes from the August 19, 2014 regular meeting. Can I have a motion to do so?
Some of them.
Motion by Nicole, second by Ann Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
I abstain.
Cheer votes aye, motion passes 5-0-1. And just note Karen's abstention. Okay. Item number five, first selectman's report. Just to address Mike's question really quick. As part of the capital plan for 2014-2015, we included $17,000 to purchase the two additional stones. The quote was given to us by Stanley Jackomowski. Rory worked with Stanley and the company to have the stones ordered. I believe Stanley ordered those today, picked up the PO today, so that will be ordered shortly. But again, that's just the stone. It doesn't include the bronze plaques. So, yes, Michael, you will need to get chopping. The quote that Stanley gave, I believe the plaques would be an additional $10,000, but we're going to look to apply for a Matthews grant for those next spring. Okay. So, I'll continue with the first selectman's report. Work on the 2013-2014 budget is just about finished. The 60-day accrual was just completed. It came back better than expected. We project this will push our surplus to a bit over $240,000. We expect to have the final audited numbers by the end of 2014. Work and review of the 2014-2015 budget has begun. On the income side, we are aligned with projections with regards to tax collection. Other revenue numbers are also as expected. On the expenditure side, the only area of concern is retiree health benefits. We have currently expended about 29% of the account, which is ahead of budget. Final budget approved amount was lower than the requested amount. So, what finance, the finance department had suggested we put aside, the Board of Finance actually lowered that amount. We'll continue to monitor this throughout the year. I was informed by several residents affected by the chip ceiling issue that their claims are being rejected by Seymour Ceilings Insurance Company. The insurance company is saying there is no claim because Seymour Ceiling did nothing wrong. The information has been passed on to Town Council and be occluded as a part of the town's lawsuit going forward. I met with the Board of Education regarding the consolidating of technology services for the town. I'm expecting them to take action this evening to move us forward in that direction. We are targeting an October 1st start date. Attended the Henny Penny ribbon-cutting ceremony. John Hendel and his team did a great job getting everything ready. They are certainly a welcome addition to town, and I look forward to working with them in the future. Attended the first meeting of the new 19-town Naugatuck Valley Council of Governments last Friday. I was honored to be appointed co-chairman by my fellow mayors and first selectmen. I'll be taking part in CCM's legislative program development for the 2015 session. I've been assigned to both the Labor Relations Committee and the Tax and Finance Committee again this year. I'll also be serving as vice chairman of the Task Force on Sustainability. I'm looking forward to working with my fellow mayors and first selectmen to develop our lobbying efforts for the benefit of all the towns and cities in Connecticut. Attended the Citizens Engine Lobster and Steak Dinner with my family. I want to congratulate the firemen on another fantastic dinner and night out. I'm already looking forward to next year. Union negotiations with the police, administrators, clerks, and public works are ongoing. Over the last two weeks, we've made considerable amount of progress, and I hope to be wrapping up some of these negotiations within the next two to three weeks. Attended the rededication of the Ronald Randall Field. The event was very well attended, and it was a privilege for me to be a part of it. As a reminder, the Pink Prime Aid will take place on Sunday, October 12, 2014. Event will begin at 1 o'clock. We are currently looking for walkers as well as sponsors for this great event. Anyone that's interested in participating, please let myself and Rory know. I expect to see all male members of the board to be there to join Paul and I in this walk. Finally, I received today an update from the -- I'm a -- oh, excuse me. I take that back.
I'll explain.
Okay, sorry. Well, Paul did start it, so he still gets credit. Finally, I received today an update from the Boys and Girls Club regarding enrollment numbers for September. They currently have 56 kids and are expecting that number to grow to over 60 by the end of the month. So, with that, I will close my first selectman's report. Like to make a motion to add to the agenda discussion of possible action regarding two resolutions for the Ronald Randall Memorial Field. Motion by Ann Marie, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Cheer votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Next item on the agenda, resolutions regarding, or discussion of possible action regarding resolutions for the Ronald Randall Memorial Field. Okay, we have, you should have two resolutions in front of you. One is the original resolution from December 18, 1969. So, what we're going to do is we're going to take action on this resolution, just to reaffirm its status. And then you'll also see a new resolution that we will be putting forth today, again, just strengthening the previous resolution. We're going to take the two resolutions. We're going to put them together in a nice frame. We're going to send that to the Randall family as a memento. So, we'll go through this, the first one. So, on the top, it should say, "Resolution of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Seymour from December 18, 1969. Whereas Lance Corporal Ronald Mitchell Randall, U.S. Marine Corps, was a resident of the Town of Seymour, and whereas the said Ronald Mitchell Randall entered the United States Marine Corps in the service of his country, and whereas the said Ronald Mitchell Randall served with valor and distinction, and whereas the said Ronald Mitchell Randall was killed in action in the Republic of South Vietnam, and whereas the people of the Town of Seymour desire to acknowledge his bravery and the supreme sacrifice he made for his country, now therefore be it resolved by the Town of Seymour in a town meeting assembly that the Seymour Junior High School Field shall be named the Ronald Mitchell Randall Memorial Field, and the actions of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education in so naming said field are hereby ratified and confirmed." So, can I have a motion to reaffirm the resolution as presented from December 18, 1969?
Some more.
Motion to reaffirm. Motion by Paul, second by Karen. Is there any discussion? Okay, just under discussion, there is the original version down there, so if you could, after you've looked it over, you can sign it and pass it on down. If there's no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The cheer votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Okay, and then the next resolution, reaffirmation of Ronald Randall Field dedication resolution from December 18, 1969. Whereas service to one's country is the greatest sacrifice that one can offer, and whereas the Town of Seymour strives to honor and remember the service of its residents, and whereas nearly 45 years has passed since the original dedication of the Ronald Mitchell Randall Memorial Field, and whereas Ronald Randall gave the ultimate sacrifice in defense of his country, and whereas the enduring legacy of his service deserves recognition and reaffirmation, now therefore be it resolved, the Town of Seymour Board of Selectmen do hereby reaffirm the resolution first brought forth at the town meeting held December 18, 1969, and do rededicate the Ronald Mitchell Randall Memorial Field at the Seymour Community Center. Can I have a motion to accept this resolution as presented?
Motion to accept the resolution.
Motion by Paul, second, second by Al. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The cheer votes aye, motion passes 6-0. So, we'll pass that second one down. Take just a little timeout. Should ask if you were okay with any of this, but I assumed you would have stopped me long before. So, we just need, we'll get Len to sign. Rory, you want to take these just so they don't get lost? I'll scribble on or anything. Perfect. Thank you. Okay. Item number six, discussion, take possible action regarding project bid recommendation from town engineer for the reconstruction of Patton Ave and Jay Lane. Okay, in your packets, you should have a letter, or actually, it was handed out when you got here, I'm sorry, from Jim Galligan. And I'll read that into the record. Regarding reconstruction of Patton Ave and Jay Lane, Dear Mr. Miller, the Town of Seymour opened bids for the above referenced project on Tuesday, September 2, 2014. There were four bids submitted. The low bidder was A&amp;J Construction with a bid of $319,086. This office has reviewed the bids and found that the bid submitted by A&amp;J Construction complies with the bid documents. Therefore, this office recommends award of the reference project to A&amp;J Construction in the amount of $319,086. If you have any questions, I could be reached in Jim List's telephone number. Sincerely, James H. Galligan, Town Engineer of Seymour, NAFIS and Young Engineers Incorporated. Okay. So, as you know, with our road program, along with LoSIP funds, we had identified these roads to be category A roads for $350,000, which we had put aside. So, we had the bids, and you could see the attached spreadsheet. You can see that we had several people come forward, pay the $50 for the bid specs. Out of that, we received four bids, A&amp;J Construction, Cochiola, Guerrera Construction, and Complete Construction. It is the recommendation of Town Engineer that we move forward, as he said, with A&amp;J Construction. Any questions, comments, thoughts?
Yeah, good. I'm just curious who's on the request for proposal review committee regarding the bids. Just curious.
Town engineer.
Jim.
Jim Galligan. Yes.
Can he use the board to try to, or knows about them or anything?
Yes, I know A&amp;J and Cochiola and Guerrera. I don't know 100% about Complete Construction.
Do we know of work that these folks with A&amp;J have done before in this area or anything that you are aware of?
I am not aware. Jim, I tried to reach Jim today, but was unavailable to talk to him.
And the usual bid bond will be in place?
Yes, bid, well, yeah, bid bond for this, and we are asking, and Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, that the bond is held for at least one year, so it gets us through one winter cycle.
Yeah. I appreciate that.
Yeah. So, that would be extended. So, I mean, the advantage to this coming in below what we had budgeted could allow us to do some more roads this September, so that would certainly be advantageous potentially. So, but I'll have more conversations with Jim over the next week or so. My understanding is the company plans to start mid to the end of September and be completed by the middle of October.
And can you just ask him the difference between, you know, one and two A&amp;J? Because I mean, there's only, there's not much monetary difference, but why he picked them over Cochiola?
I can certainly ask.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, you can certainly ask. No problem. Okay. If there's no other questions or comments, then I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of Town Engineer Jim Galligan for the bids submitted for the construction, reconstruction of Patton Ave and Jay Lane and award it to A&amp;J Construction with a bid amount of $319,086.
So, I'll move.
Motion by Paul, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Cheer votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Next item on the agenda is item number seven, discussion, take possible action on the use of LoSIP funds for line painting. You should all have a memo to myself from Dennis Rosen, Director of Public Works, regarding line painting. Seymour Public Works Department is requesting the Board of Selectmen to authorize $8,000 from the local investment program, LoSIP funds, to perform line painting of our roads throughout the Town of Seymour, regards Dennis Rosen. We do line painting on an annual basis, so this is the request to have that done this fall. So, I'll entertain a motion to move $8,000 from our LoSIP account to, for line painting as requested by the Director of Public Works, Dennis Rosen.
So, move.
Motion by Karen, second by Al. Is there any further discussion?
Is this in addition to what has just recently been done?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But I know some of the streets recently have been done.
Yeah, this is mine.
Okay, this is via addition. Okay.
And do we know how far this will take us?
I don't know the exact amount, no. Just an update on the LoSIP account, after this transfer, we'll have about $91,000 left in LoSIP, plus another $115,000 coming in on March 5, March of 2015. So, we still have some, a little bit of money left. If there's no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Cheer votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Next item on the agenda is item number eight, discussion, take possible action on strategic planning, finance ordinances. Now, we'd had some conversation about the ordinances for the 10-year strategic plan. The one thing we haven't done is formally moved it from the Board of Selectmen to the ordinance committee. We'd like, we're going to create two ordinances. One ordinance is for debt service, the other is for fund balance. Everything else, we're going to do by resolution. So, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to forward to the ordinance committee discussion of possible action regarding creation of ordinances for debt service and fund balance for the Town of Seymour Long-Term Financial Strategic Planning Committee.
Same with you.
Motion by Nicole, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Just under discussion. If we move this forward, then I'll convene a time with Nicole and Karen, and we'll get these going and have something back for the meeting on the 16th. Hearing no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The cheer votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Item number nine, set special town meeting for September 16, 2014, at 6:45 regarding strategic planning, finance ordinances. We actually don't need to take any action on that at this point, because we're one step too fast. So, I apologize for that. So, we'll take no action. Item number 10, set special town meeting for September 16, 2014, at 6:50 PM regarding financing of the 2014-2015 capital issues. This is the last piece that Bond Council is asking us to go through, so we'll be setting up a special town meeting on the 16th, but they asked me to read a specific resolution first. Resolve that notwithstanding the prior action of the Board of Selectmen, the resolution regarding a $220,000 appropriation and borrowing authorization for costs with respect to various town facility, public works, and public safety equipment acquisitions and improvements, as previously recommended by the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance, shall be submitted for consideration and action at a special town meeting to be held on Tuesday, September 16, 2014, at 6:50 PM in the Norma Drummer Room, Town Hall 1, First Street in Seymour. Can I have a motion to accept the resolution as presented and to set the special town meeting for September 16, 2014, at 6:50 PM? Motion by Nicole, second by Ann Marie. Everybody's comfortable with this, just under discussion? This is more procedural than anything else. The other thing that I'm going to pass along, since we're all here, is if everyone can sign this sheet. We need to have everyone's signature on that for Bond Council. Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The cheer votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Take just one little timeout. And then I'm going to give you this copy as well. You have Len sign it and then we're. Thank you, everyone. Okay, item number 11, discussion, take possible action regarding extension of Winters Brothers' contract. As you know, Tony and I have been working with the town's vendors to do one of two things, either A, to lower the cost of services provided, or B, to improve services that are being provided. Winters Brothers used to handle just the town's recycling. Winters Brothers has purchased Latella's interests and are now not only handling our recycling, but are also handling our solid waste as well, our MSW. So, in conversations with Winters Brothers, I asked them to see what they can do to potentially improve the services that they provide to the Town of Seymour. So, they have come forward with the two suggestions that you see in front of you. Does everybody have those, two contracts?
No.
No?
No.
No? Okey-dokey, then. All right. We're going to make some copies. Rory, I'm going to email to you right now the original.
Okay.
There with me one second. Well, we'll just wait till it gets here, so everybody can see. So, Rich, do we have to take a recess, or can we just kind of?
Sure.
Well, how about this?
Versus paper.
Yeah. Well, I can make a motion to go out of order and to skip down to item number 13. Can I have a motion to do so?
Some.
Motion by Ann Marie, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Cheer votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Next item on the agenda, item number 13, discussion, take possible action on the Veolia contract extension. In front of you, you should have a letter to myself from John Oatley. What we're asking to do, well, let me take a step back. In going through the contract with Veolia, what Rich determined was that it was a series of amendments, and it wasn't really a contract. And when trying to put things together, Amendment 7 referred back to Amendment 6, which referred back to Amendment 4, which referred back, and it just got very convoluted. So, what we're asking Veolia to do, if we're going to consider moving forward, was to create a brand-new contract. Rich has been in contact with Council for Veolia Water, but knew that this would not happen by the end of August, so we reached out to Veolia to ask for an extension through December 31, 2014. So, again, as we had an extension through the end of August, this is now an extension through the end of December. Everything, all terms will stay in effect as the current contract states, and as they go through that language and make the updates, then we'll move forward as appropriate. Anything you'd like to add, Mr. Petrola?
I'd just like to note, we have an original contract document, and it's six, and we need to, you know, it is, uh, some relation, and it's not clear what the reason is, but we're going to propose continuing the document, because I think they probably have some errors in there, where something's there with 3.1, and the same document, 6, because they're leaving, so, very general, and we have made the same questions last, but we don't have to.
The other thing, too, is some of the amendments were signed by the first selectmen, some were signed by the WPCA, so it was a bit of a mess.
The original contract is signed by both the first selectmen and the WPCA. One, at least, a couple of the amendments were signed just by the WPCA. One amendment was signed by both the first selectmen and the WPCA, and I believe, I'm doing this in memory, I don't have my final list in there, but my recollection is, and one amendment was signed just by Scott Barton, which is the one. So, they're all over the place.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay, so then I will, at this, let me open up the, okay, so I'll entertain a motion to accept the extension of terms agreement with Veolia Water through December 31, 2014. Motion by Al, second by Nicole. Discussion.
Question. Is this including, it says also our maintenance agreement, but is that a separate?
Oh, we're going to cover everything in this new contract. Because there's missing pieces, there's, it's not a good thing.
We have.
Do you have both?
Yeah, I'm going to go back there.
Okay, so any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
The cheer votes aye, motion passes 5-0-1, and please note Ann Marie's abstention. Ann Marie abstention. Going back into order, item number 11. Okay. So, everybody should now have in front of you the two proposals from Winters Brothers. One is a proposal for MSW, so the municipal solid waste pickup, and the other is for the curbside single-stream recycling pickup. And now, this is just for curbside pickup. This doesn't have anything to do with when we get the garbage from, at the transfer station, sending it up to Bristol Resources and shipping it back. This is just for curbside pickup. So, let's So let's start with what Winters Brothers is offering in general. What Winters Brothers would like to do is they would like to go out and purchase a brand-new, state-of-the-art dump truck that would take MSW at the same exact time that it takes recycling. They would give each person one ninety-six gallon container for recycling and one ninety-six gallon container for municipal solid waste. Recycling would go from every other week to every single week. So at the same time they picked up the municipal solid waste, they would pick up the recycling. The truck essentially pulls up, two forks come out, it grabs the garbage can, it flips it over, it puts it back down, it picks up the other one, it flips it over, and it puts it back down. So it will improve service to the town of Seymour. The way it will improve service, obviously, is we will have more recycling. It's also a benefit to the residents, because they will, as I said, each get the two ninety-six gallon containers. The ninety-six gallon containers will remain owned and maintained by Winters Brothers, so they will not be town of Seymour property. So if a wheel pops off, they will call, Winters Brothers has a group of people, all they do is maintain the garbage cans. So did not know that until this process started. What Winters Brothers is asking for in exchange for this additional service is they would like to extend the contract. The contract expires in June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. They'd like to extend it through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. So they'd like to extend the contract for five years. If we go to the municipal solid waste one, let's start there so we can all go through that together. If you skip down to part four, you can see what they're asking for. Now, for fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, for municipal solid wastes, curbside pickup, the town of Seymour pays three hundred seventeen thousand sixteen dollars. In two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, we pay three hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars. That's set by contract. In year one of the contract extension, so in years, July first, two thousand sixteen to June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, Winters Brothers is going to hold the price. So they will not increase the pricing for that one year. After that, as you can see, they will slowly increase the price up. So if you break this down over the six-year term, the increase that Winters Brothers will be asking for on the municipal solid waste will be one point one eight percent on average a year, which I think is extremely reasonable. Again, on, if you go to page two of that section, section five, contractor agrees to provide one ninety-six gallon cart at no cost to each home within the town of Seymour for the collection of municipal solid waste. Said carts will be owned and maintained by the contractor. And then item six, all other terms and conditions set forth in the agreement shall remain in full force and effect. Well, that, there's one for municipal solid waste, and then there'll be one for, one for recycling. Hold on, before we go questions, let's just go to, now let's go to the single stream. That's the other addendum. Okay, as, for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen year, the town of Seymour pays two dollars and forty cents per unit, per dwelling, per month. So the town of Seymour pays a hundred, about a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars to have single-stream recycling every other week, so twenty-six pickups for each, each home. In two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, the number will go to two dollars and forty-five cents, that's by contract. What Winters Brothers is asking for in this addendum, in the first year, they will, again, they will hold that price to two dollars and forty-five cents, and then slowly increase it up to two dollars and seventy cents per unit over the six years. The increase on average is one point five eight percent. But again, keep in mind, we're going from twenty-six times a year to fifty-two times a year. So the residents are gonna get double the opportunity. Tony and I went through and ran just some numbers to give you a few ideas. Couple of things that I want you to be aware of. If you go to, actually, it's not in this, in addendum, so we'll have to have that added in. Winters Brothers is also willing to increase the reimbursement that the town of Seymour gets for recyclables from ten dollars a ton to twelve dollars a ton. So with more opportunities to, for recycling, we should be generating more tonnage, we'll be getting paid a larger amount for tonnage. Ballpark figure, just to keep it simple, the town of Seymour does about twenty-five hundred tons a year in recycling currently. If, and this is where it's gonna get a little complicated now, so I want everybody to just try to follow along as best I can. If I don't explain it right, just let me know. The town of Seymour pays seventy-seven dollars and twenty-five cents a ton to get rid of our garbage. So we're talking now about, we talked before about how the price we pay to get it to the transfer station. The seventy-seven dollars and twenty-five cents is to take it from the transfer station up to Bristol Resources and have it burned to produce the energy as part of the consortium that we are a part of. Every ton that we don't send through that process saves the town seventy-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Every additional ton of recycling that we add will gain us twelve dollars. You put those two together, it's eighty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. So the more MSW we can remove and return into recycling, the better off the town's going to be. Does that make sense so far? So someone like me who's a bad recycler, I will admit that. This is going to force me to become a better recycler. So if I, if my family generates one ton of change, so instead of going in the garbage can, we put it in the recycling, it'll save the town eighty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Now, why that's important, in year one, just as an example, the difference between what we're gonna pay for curbside pickup of municipal solid waste, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, we're gonna pay three hundred and seventeen dollars, sixteen cents. Two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen is going to increase, as we talked about, to three hundred twenty-three dollars and, three hundred and fifty-six dollars, excuse me. That's a difference of six thousand three hundred and forty dollars. If you take that eighty-seven twenty-five and you divide it by, excuse me, you take that three, six thousand three hundred and forty divided by the eighty-seven twenty-five, it comes up to seventy-two dollars and sixty-six tons. So we only need to change as a community seventy-two tons for this to become a better deal for the town of Seymour. Does that make sense? So if you look at the numbers as a whole, maybe it doesn't make as much sense, but if you break it down that way, it's not gonna take a lot. That's only two point nine percent increase in our recycle, which doubling the amount of time we could recycle, I don't think the two point nine percent increase is going to be that big deal.
How many households is that approximately? Any idea?
There's a little over five thousand. What do you mean, everybody's participating? What I'm saying, not everybody's a good recycler like you.
No.
No, I'm not saying that to be, I'm not saying that to be funny. Al's actually a good recycler.
Maybe, I am. I've been trained well.
Al's a good recycler. But I'm saying, so if, if there's seventy-nine, seventy-seven other peop, seventy-two people, like me out across this town, that recycle better, seventy-two other households, this will pay for itself, is what I'm saying. Is what I'm saying, yes.
Figure out what the number is.
Yeah. It's seventy-two tons, which is not a lot. So again, that's, that's kinda where...
I'm gonna be one of them.
And I'm gonna be one of them, yes. Yes.
There it is.
Now, so that's where that stands. So that's that. Now, if, even if the tonnage doesn't change, so somebody like me continues to not be good at recycling, and we don't make up that seventy-two point six-six tons, the difference in the projected revenue that we receive at that ten dollars a ton with an estimated twenty-five hundred tons will go from twenty-five hundred, excuse me, twenty-five thousand to thirty thousand. So just the two dollars alone will eat up almost all of that sixty-three hundred in the first year. So I think this is a good deal across the board for the town of Seymour. Okay, now I'll ask questions, I think I was very, I was all over the map on that. When I practiced this this afternoon, it was much clearer. It's much more, it was much more succinct.
Reduce it down to how many more households need to participate to make this advantageous and...
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't think it should be a challenge.
So a household averages about a tonnage of recycling, if they're...
About a half a ton.
Pretty, about a half a ton.
About a half a ton.
So with the single stream, just to make sure, I understand single stream recycling. But, you know, when we have the recycling comes out now, people are having to tie up their cardboard, having to tie up their paper. Is that what's gonna have to be done now, or are you just gonna put this ninety-six gallon thing?
You throw everything in the ninety-six gallon container.
So it's gonna make it easier.
Much easier.
It's gonna make everything look more uniform throughout town.
Every bundle on the street will have the same garbage can, the same...
It'll be closed.
It'll be closed.
With closed tops, they're on wheels, so for older people, it'll be easier to wheel the car. I mean, they're big, they're big ninety-six gallons. Yeah, yeah. Or a thirteen-year-old. I'm like, yep.
And what about like the apartment, the one, the two, the three, you know, the apartment buildings themselves, how is that going?
They'll have multiple containers.
And I think the other thing is, you know, the, I can only speak for the high school, but they don't take recycling seriously at all. Some teachers do, they have their own recycling, but in the cafeteria, you know, after three lunches, there's plastic all over the place, because the janitors have fought the recycling.
Do they have actual bins at the high school though?
No.
For them to throw their...
The teachers...
So will we have, do you know, I don't know, will they have bins there they can...
This is, this is just residential. This is residential.
They have the big dumpsters.
Yeah. So would, but could we, but to that point, could we move something for the schools? I'm sure we could. Sure we could.
Because there, there's, there's a ton of plastic bottles that just get thrown in the garbage rather than recycled. And, you know, some teachers are very diligent about, you know, taking an empty box of, you know, copy paper, and they'll recy, they'll recycle and make the kids put their plastic bottles in there, but not every teacher does.
Well, as you can, the more we can do that, the better the reimbursement will be.
My point.
And just the better off it is for...
That's my point.
For everyone else. So it is my understanding that we would be the first town with Winters Brothers to do that. So I think this is something that they would like to do more of, so I think that's why they're offering us as many perks as they are, because they like to get it going. Now, in the initial information that I received from Ryan Bingham, Ryan Bingham, for those of you who don't know, he's the former longtime mayor of Torrington. He is now Winters Brothers, I guess, Director of Governmental Affairs, so he's our contact person. They're going to buy a new twentieth century vehicle, it's gonna cost them about four hundred thousand dollars, and they project that the ninety-six gallon containers for the town of Seymour is gonna cost them about nine hundred thousand. So Winters Brothers is making an investment in this. Now again, obviously, there's some value to them, the more recycling that they get, the, I mean, they're, they're business, they're gonna make money as well. But I think this is a win-win for, for everybody. Now, as appealing as this deal sounds, we have one small issue. Contracts these size, sizes need to be competitively bid. So I asked Rich to look into this, and I'm gonna read a memo that Rich sent to myself and to Tony, and then Rich, I'll ask you to comment more definitely on it. Says, "We have reviewed the present proposal by Winters Brothers for curbside collection for MSW and recycling. At the present, Winters Brothers serves the town as the assignee of the Latella MSW contract. The contract of the magnitude of the proposed agreement falls within the scope of section two dash two sixty-three of the Seymour Town Code, the competitive bidding ordinance. Section two dash two sixty-eight of the Seymour Town Code contains a number of exemptions from the competitive bid requirement. Section two dash two sixty-eight A is the only applicable exemption that may apply to the proposal. Section two dash two sixty-A provides as follows. Any purchase or contract for purchasing which is authorized by town meeting action may be exempt from the provisions of this article by the action of the town meeting authorizing the purchase. Therefore, a properly noted special town meeting pursuant to section thirteen dash two of the town charter can be called to exempt the proposed Winters Brothers transaction from the requirements of the competitive bid procedure. In the event a quorum of fifty individuals are not present at the duly noted special town meeting, then the board of selectmen may transact the business on the call. Seymour Town Charter thirteen point one subsection F. In such an event, the board of selectmen can authorize the exemption pursuant to section two dash two sixty-three A of the Seymour Town Code." Rich, would you like to expand on that?
Obviously, we have a competitive bidding ordinance, and we would all, we can address the competitive bidding path. You got into a, we received a proposal from a vendor that you need to have them agent, so to the extent you wish to waive the competitive bidding ordinance or go forward by granting a contract extension, it would be for your benefits. The only mechanism under the special competitive bidding ordinance is to call a special town meeting to the purpose of waiving the competitive bid requirement and acting on the contract. In the event you don't feel a quorum, which most likely you won't, because I think they have quite a while, maybe not that long, you try to authorize a fourth, second, and third. And that's the method if you choose to take a different...
Okay, and just a little bit more background, the last time we bid the MSW, we received two bids, one from Winters and one from Latella. And the last time we bid the recycling, I believe we received one bid from Winters Brothers. So Winters Brothers is becoming the biggest, the biggest company on the block, per se, so. If we were to go out to bid, and I'm not saying this to scare anybody or to force a decision one way or the other, can't guarantee that, I'm sure if we were to put this out to competitively bid, we may not get the same offer from Winters Brothers for the same price. Knowing what we know about the service that Winters provides, how they've worked with us in the past, and I'm sure Paul can speak to it too, because he's dealt with them as well. I think they're a very reputable company, very strong company. From my perspective, I'm very happy that the person they've hired to work with the towns is a person that's actually sat in a, in a mayor's seat, so they understand the issues and problems that we go through. I think Roy can speak, they're very easy to work with, particularly with problems and things, they deal very well with the residents. It is definitely mine and Tony's recommendation that we move forward to set the special town meeting, to waive the competitive bidding ordinance and to move forward with this. But I would like the full support of the board, or if anybody has any issues or concerns, we raise those now, we discuss them, and we either move forward or we don't move forward, but we all do so together. Because to Rich's point, I would be shocked if we got fifty residents, and I think the decision ultimately would fall with us, so I wanna make sure that we are all together on this. So questions, comments, issues, concerns?
Well, I think you, you kinda answered my two questions. Of course, was the competitive bidding, because I couldn't remember anymore than ever two companies ever, you know, since I've been on the board in all time. And the other one was that we are gonna be the first, I was gonna suggest you contacting other people that are in Bristol Resource Recovery with you to see if anybody does the same type of thing, and obviously, if we're the first, they won't, so you won't have any reference.
Yeah, no, not on Winters. So, and, well, I won't, I can't say it at this point. We may have discussions about other things in the next couple of meetings as well, because Winters has made some other offers as well. Karen, any concerns for you?
Not at all.
Paul, you're good?
It's a good deal.
You've answered my questions, I guess, if those two are my main questions.
Nicole?
No, I think it seems like a good opportunity to move forward with this.
Al?
I like the idea of being a recycler every week.
Yes. I like that here, recycling every week and everybody having, you know, the ninety-six gallon containers, looking uniform, it projects a lot nicer. My only concern is if we don't go to the public meeting, the public notice, that we will have residents here that will come and do this and not go in there.
Well, we'll duly notice the special town meeting like we're required to do. We'll also put information out on, on the website for people as well as Facebook, and I got a sneaking suspicion that there'll be articles in the Valley Indian New Haven Register on this tomorrow, maybe. Well, I know Jody will, but who knows what the New Haven Register's gonna do?
Kurt, I would have...
Probably write about a frog fight or something.
I have one other suggestion. This does all go through, that Winters Brothers comes out with a document that lets the residents know exactly what goes where and all that stuff.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, oh, no, definitely.
I know it's been done in the past, but I...
I know it's been done in the past, but I think it needs to be updated.
Yep. We have a section out on the website now of that, so we can take that and figure out a way to get it to, to residents. I can tell you, Winters is very excited to move forward with this, so they're, I've been getting a call. It seems every day.
They could pay for a mailer then if you need it.
Just to see. Yeah, if we ask them for that, they just might.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
So I, I'll make a note.
A mailer.
A mailer to let residents know.
Yep.
Right after. Now, if we were to move forward with this, and so let's say it is, it approved on the, on September sixteenth, one way or the other. There's gonna be some lead time. This probably wouldn't go into effect until November first, because they need some time, obviously, to purchase the truck and to get the toters and to drop the toters off and so on and so forth. So I, I think they're gonna need at least four or five weeks to accomplish all of that. So just.
Yeah, with their mailer, they could actually let.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
When the bins are gonna be dropped off and everything.
Yep.
You know, that.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We, there'd be some lead time where the mailers can get out even prior to. So, all right, let me, Rory, can you make a note that we call Winters tomorrow and remind? Oh, boy. Okay, so I will reach out to Ryan Bingham tomorrow and ask that question. Would anyone like a Winters representative at the meeting on September sixteenth? To ask any direct questions, or is everyone comfortable with?
That's okay.
What if someone has a party over the weekend?
Yeah.
And that one garbage pile does not hold enough?
Mm-hmm.
Will they not take that garbage unless it's in that garbage pile?
They would prefer that everyone had the cans available to pick up. So in a case like that, I don't know.
What do you do?
I'd have to answer that question.
Ask that question?
I'll ask that question. Because now, someone can go out and buy another ninety-six gallon container. As long as the machine can pick it up, they will pick it up.
Maybe not a bad idea to have someone from Winters Brothers there.
Okay. Rory, can you make an, we'll ask Ryan to come on the sixteenth? Now, just, I will not be at the September sixteenth meeting. The deputy first select will be running that meeting, but representative from Winters Brothers should be available and will be able to address all those questions. Any other questions? If you come up with questions or concerns, in the meantime, you can either save them for the sixteenth, or you can send them to me ahead of time, and I can try to get answers, whichever everyone is more comfortable with. Okay? All right, so then, with that done, we will move on to item number twelve. Set special town meeting for September sixteenth, two thousand fourteen, at six thirty P.M. regarding Winters Brothers' contract. Can I have a motion to do so?
Motion.
Motion by Al, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Excuse me, six zero on the poll test. Next item on the agenda is item number fourteen. Discussion, take possible action, increasing compensation for the registrar voters. You should all have a memo in your packets from me to the Board of Selectmen. And I'll read the message. It said, "I would like to recommend the Board strongly consider providing long overdue raises to the registrar of voters' office. The last raise that was given to this office was prior to the two thousand nine, two thousand ten budget year. The salary is currently twenty-two thousand dollars, which is split equally by the Democrat and the Republican registrars, with each currently being paid eleven thousand dollars per year. The request to two thousand dollar raise would increase the salary line to a total of twenty-four thousand, increasing each salary to twelve thousand dollars per year. The approved two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen Town of Seymour budget contains the full amount of twenty-four thousand dollars for salary in line four one zero dash one four zero zero dash four four zero dash one zero one." Which is the actual line item. So, what I'm asking tonight is that the Board provide an increase in two thousand dollars to the salary line to the registrar voters. They give each registrar a one thousand dollar raise, something, a raise they have not gotten, or they haven't not gotten any raise, I should say, in six years. So I think giving them an extra thousand dollars is certainly not unreasonable. And again, the amount has already been approved in the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen budget. So can I have a motion to do so?
So move.
Motion by Karen, second by Ann Marie. Is there any further discussion? Sure.
Is this in line with what other registrars get?
Um, they're actually lower than a lot of other registrars, yeah. This has been an issue for as long as I can remember.
Oh, it has?
Yeah.
It certainly has.
This goes back to my days on the Board of Finance, so.
I think it's as long ago as it was.
Yeah, and this is just, we just missed this two thousand dollar increase, or otherwise, we would've taken action on this back in July, so. Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. So Rory, can you please alert Natalie tomorrow and let her know, and also Ron and Elise? We'll write a memo. Spectacular. Okay. Moving right along. Item number fifteen. Discussion, take possible action on ConDOT master municipal agreement. As you know, we've seen this in front of us multiple times. Rich was, Rich had reached out to DOT about some concerns that he had raised that we all agreed with. Rich has a response to that, so Rich, if you would.
I, I said, bore you by reading the entire letter, but the bottom line is, the deal is, this is our document, and I'm making a change, providing it to the entire state, this is what I'm sort of what we expected, that it was a good pass. So with that, I would recommend moving forward by offering Curtis, Curtis Selectmen, to enter into the ConDOT master municipal.
Okay.
They currently aren't gonna make that.
Yeah, they won't be budgeting. Anybody have any new questions, comments, thoughts? Everybody's comfortable. I know that was kind of the one outstanding piece that we all had. Okay, if that's the case, at this point, I will entertain a motion to allow the first selectman to sign the Connecticut Department of Transportation master municipal agreement as recommended by town council. Motion by Nicole, second by Al. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. The chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. Next item on the agenda is item number sixteen. Discussion, take possible action on veterans' tax exemption. Rich, we're gonna need a little guidance from you on this part, because I'm not a hundred percent sure how we should handle this. Okay, in your packets, you should see an email from Shirley Corona, who works for OPM, with regards to Public Act thirteen dash two twenty-four, which is an act establishing a municipal option to provide an additional property tax exemption for one hundred percent disabled veterans. Now, we had talked about this probably back in July, and we were waiting for a little bit more direction from the state of Connecticut. So you can see this information's being provided, and it's coming from Dave Levaser, who is the acting undersecretary of Intergovernmental Policy Division. What they are looking to do, as you can see, is to increase the amount of deduction for a hundred percent disabled veteran who meets the income qualifications by six thousand dollars to twenty-four thousand dollars. In front of you, you should see what would look like a ordinance that was written by our tax assessor, Joe Kuziak. Which, yeah, it's this. You should've got this handed out to you today, when you got here. And Rich, this is the question for you. Can I read this, and we do this by resolution, or do we actually have to create an ordinance? In the, in the letter. And I thought I highlighted the spot, but it needs to be, bear with me. I'm sorry, in the bill. It states that it needs to be. I had it marked too, and now I can't find it.
Can you type my words approved?
Yeah, but how we approve it. I had it marked down.
On the B, it's not B. Right on the first page.
Yeah, on the first page. Oh, there we go, thank you. In section B of Senate Bill, or Public Act number thirteen twenty-four, effective for the assessment year commencing October first, two thousand thirteen, and each assessment year thereafter, any municipality may, upon approval by its legislative body or in any town in which the legislative body is a town meeting, by the Board of Selectmen, provide that in lieu of additional exemption prescribed, and it goes on to discuss that. So can this board take action?
I'd hear you probably could, based upon that legislative language, however, is this something you need to do tonight?
If not tonight, then we can do it on the sixteenth.
What I would like to look at, because in most towns, the tax exemption program, okay, in most towns, cities, okay, the seniority, and that, and many of them are adopted by the ordinance. And what I don't know is, maybe the residents have an ordinance on the book, it needs to either be here or nearby.
Joe thought we did not.
No, I thought you did not.
Yes. But if you're not sure, is there any harm with moving this forward to the ordinance committee as well? And then if nothing needs to be done, we could enact a resolution on the sixteenth?
I would defend this into a resolution.
Correct. This, yeah, this part into a resolution. This. Sorry. Wake up everybody. Correct. Or we can clean this up.
Yeah, you, you need to rework this.
amend the ordinance, yeah. Yeah, well, this was, this was Joe's information here.
Joe didn't say he had a strong ordinance going.
He did not.
Did the president provide a rest of the term?
Yes. Yes, lower amount.
That's why I was going, that's why, in many towns, that's done by ordinance, and not by, on my end, I'm not saying we're gonna do a amendment to the old ordinance.
You gotta refer to it and.
So if you can wait till the sixth, I'll, I'll get to this, I'll look at this.
Mm-hmm. One other thing I'm, I'd like to ask you to look at.
Yeah.
Our current veterans exemption, it's tiered based on the amount of disability that a person has, or amount of, that's labeled by the VA. And then there's also income requirements, and again, folks who make more money get less and so on and so forth. What I'd like you to look at is if it would be possible for a veteran that is one hundred percent disabled to potentially have all of their taxes waived by the town. Now, I asked Joe to look into that, and he went to the property tax exemptions. And he said there are two basic categories of property tax exemption in Connecticut, those mandated by state statute and those authorized by local taxing jurisdiction by reason of an enabling statute. So I don't know if we could even do this if we wanted to. But I think it's worth checking. And if it's something that we could potentially do, then I'd like the selectmen to have that conversation.
What Joe was saying, and I'll say it's like a different way, you mean the state statutes. Off the ground.
Correct.
You don't have a state statute off the ground, that's not, as much as you may wanna do it, but in your heart, you could.
Correct, and I agree with that when the state is paying, because again, the town is reimbursed for this program by the state of Connecticut. So for the current exemption that we have and the additional exemption that we'll be adding as of October first, the state of Connecticut reimburses the town of Seymour for lost revenue. What I'm saying is if the town of Seymour has interest in going above and beyond what the state offers and do this ourselves without asking for reimbursement from the state, would that be possible? So I'd like to take what they have and potentially take it a step further. Now, we'd need to do a cost impact study and determine exactly how much this is gonna cost us, but in conversation with the assessor, we're only talking about four or five people, so it wouldn't be a tremendous sum of money. And if a person is a hundred percent disabled because, you know, a military veteran, I think it's something we at least owe it to them to explore.
What does the state, can I?
Yeah, yeah.
What is the state reimbursed? Sorry. What does the state reimburse now for a hundred percent?
Right now, before this act is instituted with no income requirement, for a person who is between seventy-six and a hundred percent disabled, they get nine thousand dollar reduction in their assessed value. For a person who meets the income requirements, it's eighteen thousand. So if their house is valued at two hundred thousand, two hundred and eighteen thousand, we only assess them at two hundred thousand that, that way. What I'd like to do is take that a step further and say they pay no taxes whatsoever. Well, and I, I agree. I don't think that's really a big, but for what a lot of the people, it turns out, that means maybe they don't have to pay their car tax. So it's, it's a few hundred dollars that it saves. I mean, it's not, it's something.
More the gesture than the impact.
Right. But I still think it's something that we should, we should consider. So unless, and somebody vehemently disagrees. Now, if that's the case, would we have to go to Hartford and lobby for it? So how do they say no to that in Hartford? Yeah.
You know, we put together a little set program, you go lobby, you have your own program.
Mm-hmm. But I'm not sure every other town would wanna join us on that, just because of the potential expense.
We created, first of all, we created, by, by Martin, like an opt-out.
Opt-out. Okay. All right. All right, so you can look into that, and do you think you'd have that for the sixteenth or not?
Yeah.
Okay. Actually, can we have that for the third, seventh, sixth? Yeah, the first meeting, just because I won't be here on the sixteenth. The first Tuesday, seventh, first Tuesday.
You'll even have it for the seventh.
All right, perfect. Thank you very much, everyone. Okay. So Michael, we may need some support from your guys. Okay. Item number seventeen, executive session, we have no executive session. Item number eighteen, appointments. We have two appointments. Nicole Claris Dietrich, Board of Education Communications and Community Advisory Committee. A new appointment. Have a motion to do so. Motion by Ann Marie.
Second.
Second by Paul. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstained?
Abstained.
Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Please note Nicole's abstention. Dan Zanussky, Technology Committee, it's a reappointment, one-year term, expires ten to two thousand and fifteen.
So move.
Motion by Karen, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. Next item on the agenda, item number nineteen, tax refunds and abatements. Nicole?
Date August twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen, to Board of Selectmen, from Tax Collector, the following overpayments of tax payments in total of one thousand seven hundred eighty-six dollars and twenty-one cents need to be approved for refund in accordance with the provisions of section twelve dash one two nine of the Connecticut General Statutes dated at Seymour the twenty-eighth day of August, two thousand and fourteen, Dana Flack, Tax Office.
Thank you, Nicole. Can I have a motion to accept the report as presented? Motion by Ann Marie, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes six zero. Item number twenty, transfers, we have no transfers. Item number twenty-one, correspondence, we have a few pieces of correspondence. Actually, we have two. We have the check registers. And then we also have a letter from Saint Augustine Church, which I believe everyone received, but I wanted to, just to go through it to make sure everyone is aware. It says, "Dear First Selectman Miller, the parishioners of Saint Augustine cordially extend an invitation to you to attend their third annual massive thanks and remembrance on Sunday, September seventh, two thousand and fourteen, ten thirty A.M. mass. It is our special way of paying tribute to the men and women of our volunteer fire departments, the police departments, our AMAs Association, and the many other volunteers of our town." the police departments, our AMAs Association, and the many other volunteers of our town for the continuing dedication to the people of Seymour and their bravery and compassion that they show as first responders. We invite you, as well as the other members of the Boards of Selectmen, regardless of faith, to join us and be part of this special mass. If you plan to attend, we ask that you please call the church rectory at the above number to let us know your intentions so that we could plan accordingly. Small reception of fellowship and faith will follow. Our community of faith looks forward to welcoming you to celebrating this special mass together in Christ, Reverend Andre Combo. Okay, so hopefully we'll see everyone there. If you have not done so already, you can call the church, or you can call Rory, and Rory will make that call for you. Okay. With that, item number 22, Public Comment. Is there any additional public comments? I go to the mic again, Mike.
Is there anybody?
Yes. I want the camera to miss out.
The camera.
It's above your head.
Oh, I'd like to thank you for the resolution, the second resolution, I think that was appropriate, and I think the family really appreciate that. Just want to make a comment on the tax exemptions, I think this is something our post members would appreciate. I think the exemptions start at $3,000 for a veteran that has no disability. That's what I get, I get a $3,000.
Yes.
Then, once you hit age 65, make the exemptions go up, and income requirements, I guess, factor into it, so I don't think we have any veterans in our post that are 100% disabled. But again, I think that's, that's something that, I mean, if you start at the bottom, maybe you could work up, you know, get that five, or $3,000 up a little bit higher, maybe instead of an exemption, make it an abatement, a tax abatement, like they did for the firemen, something to think about. Containers, you talked about the Winters Brothers. Sometimes I come through the Haynes, I caught the plantation up off Mountain Road, and I think they have similar setup where they put the bins out along the road, and they pick them up at the side. The only thing is, you can make sure you have that bin close enough to the road, so they get those forks, you know, to pick those things up, and a couple of times I've seen those things, you know, on the side of the road tipped over and everything, so I don't know who's responsible for if they drop those things or drop them in the road. I know, I know right now, we've got our garbage cans or lids sometimes in the streets, cars veering around them, not stopping, you know, to get them out of the way, and creates a hazard, so that's something to look at if those, they go to that kind of new technology. I think they'd want a 21st century truck, not a 20th century.
Did I say 20?
You said 20, yeah, I think they'd be going backwards.
Whoops, that's definitely 21st.
And then, I don't know what the town's position is, but we own the building over the corner of Bank and Wakely, and our two tenants were served papers, the feds, on this Americans with Disability, and again, we want to follow the lead of the town. I don't know what the town's position is, what they're going to do with the scooter man driving around, you know, with the serving papers, everybody, our two tenants are, they don't know what to do, they're scared, and it's so cost prohibitive, I mean, we're just looking at getting an elevator for our people upstairs, and it's so out of the ballpark, I mean, it's just not worth, you know, putting an elevator in, to make those things handicap accessible, and once you do, you got to upgrade the bathrooms, you got to upgrade other facilities inside, I don't know where they expect us to get all this money. So again, we're going to follow the lead of the town to see what, what their position is, because again, all these people were served papers, and we haven't heard any feedback back from downtown tenants or downtown, you know, business people, so I don't know where everybody stands on that.
I'll respond to any Selectmen's comments, just gently, very gently. Is there any other public comment? Come on up, I'll be fine, I'll be fine.
Michael, 185 Skokera, just one concluding comment, on that promontory that overlooks the Usatonic River. I remember you said there was something having to do with archaeologists that are looking into that, remember? It was a while back.
Fish Bypass.
What's that?
The Fish Bypass?
No, no, up on the hill up there. What's that promontory that overlooks the Usatonic?
Little Laurel Line Ridge Park.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, what is the condition of the, what are the archaeologists doing right now? Are there any Indian burial grounds there, anything sacred sites?
That I don't know. I'd have to, I can check.
Okay. But I mean, what, why were they called in in the first place on that?
That part I don't know. I can ask Peter Raza? Oh, I can.
Okay, thanks very much.
I'll ask Peter Raza, because he did it. Is there any other public comment? Is there any other public comment? Okay, hearing no other public comments, Selectmen's comments, Karen.
I just want to compliment the veterans for a beautiful ceremony last Saturday at Randall Field, much overdue, you know, it's nice to see it rededicated with his family there, that was very, very nice, and I'm certainly looking forward to the dedication of the Fish Bypass and the new park named after Paul Pollock. I related to you that I was contacted by email by Robert Pollock, who's in Special Forces, who requested that he be given a moment to speak during the ceremony, and that Mrs. Pollock might have some words to say. So I would certainly formally request that that be passed along to whomever is planning this ceremony. I myself am not involved in the planning of the ceremony, I've talked to Chuck Lee a couple of times, but I just think that we should honor the request of the grandson, well, the son, Joe, the grandson, Robert, and Millie Pollock.
Well, Mrs. Pollock can speak as often as much as she'd like, and nobody's stopping that.
Well, that's what she said to me, I just want to formally put it...
Yeah, no, no.
Put it on the record. And the only other thing was, I had asked, I missed the last meeting due to illness, but the meeting before that, I asked for a ruling from council about blighted property and whether or not the fines apply if the owner has a permit and is doing internal work inside the building, as opposed to external work. I went past the house again a couple of weeks ago, they're clearly gutting the inside of the house, but they're doing nothing for the outside, and the garage roof has caved in.
The fact that permits have been issued, not stayed, sound, is property has been cited for light, and it's very, very vulnerable, and still has been considered as a problem. Time this March, I would be, we find the deal, and, the, now, there is a procedure within the town code for 151C4, which provides that a fine application to Board of Selectmen or to hearing, or for showing they would do, or a base civil penalty, so if somebody is doing their best to remedy it, and there's other provisions, but if someone is doing their best to allow, and they call for them, they're doing work, and moving forward, they can always apply to the board to abate the, the wage, while they're relinquished out of an own right, or labor, and that's something that can be done with the, with the ordinance. With all that said, there is no, the one, the exemption, the, 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 the...
Thank you. And lastly, a question about Seymour lumber.
Seymour lumber had, they have all of their ducks in a row. The only issue they had was for the operator of the excavator to take the building down, they need to have 32 hours of OSHA training. The company that they had entered into agreement with, their operators did not have the OSHA training. So they reached out to OSHA, OSHA said, you can go ahead and do it, but if we show up, we're going to shut the whole job site down. So the Koch family is currently, has made contact with another company whose excavator operators do have all the OSHA requirements, they're just waiting back for a price. Everything else is in line.
This year?
At this point, I'm not going to make any commitment, so.
Okay.
But I mean, I was shocked that the company that he, that they initially contracted, that their operators didn't have this OSHA training. Quite shocked. They, I guess they regularly don't do this type of work. Fred Messori is checking in almost every other day with Mr. Koch to keep this process moving. But you did notice they did take down the back shed.
I did see them.
So some progress has been made.
Okay.
Unfortunately, that's the best I have.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Paul?
Just a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank the town and the veterans for the service on Saturday for Ronald Randall. I know that my classmates were truly impressed and happy with what was, what was done. The evening before, we got together with the Randall family, and there were 15 of my classmates there, and then the day of the ceremony, I think there was like 22.
I guess I saw the picture, I mean, it was a big...
There was some people missing from that picture, too.
Yeah, that was nice.
So, and they were, you know, they were proud to be members of Class of 67, and, you know, Rodney and Ronald's friend. For those that don't know, the flowers were donated by the class of 1967, and the shirts that the boys had on were also donated by the class of 67. So thank you again for doing that nice ceremony. Mike, thank you very much. Second thing is, you mentioned the Pink Promenade, and I will be out of state unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to say it. I'm sorry, I'll be on vacation, but, yeah.
That's quite right.
I will be, I will be in Albuquerque at the Hot Air Bloom Festival.
Oh, well, there you go. So now, if, will Phil be joining?
I would hope so.
Because that would leave Phil and I as the only two now...
The only two to go every year.
Because you, Phil, and I have been the only three.
Yeah, yep.
So maybe we'll get a pair of shoes and walk it.
There you go.
Somebody walking in your honor for you.
Yeah, and the, the last thing was something that was mentioned last year after Christmas, around Christmas time, was that the Christmas parade and small-town business Saturday is the same day, is there any, been any discussions to...
It was moved.
Pardon me?
It was moved.
It was moved?
Yes.
Oh, the parade's moved?
Parade's moved.
Okay.
Parade's now on Sunday.
On Sunday, good. Because I mean, I guess some folks weren't aware that it's moved, but that's good, I'll let...
We, Rory helped, we reached out to Mr. Lang to have that changed, and he was very open to moving that to Sunday.
I thought originally it was on Sunday when it first started, I can't remember.
It used to always be on Sunday.
That's what I thought.
They moved it to Saturday because of the inclement weather.
Right.
They have a hard time getting people to come back.
Right.
So they had a day, but Mr. Lang said that he will, he'll move it to that Sunday.
Okay, that's, that's great, thank you very much.
Not a problem at all. Nicole?
I just wanted to apologize for not being able to attend the Ronald Randall rededication ceremony, I had a prior commitment that I couldn't change, though I tried. I heard it was a great, it was a great ceremony, and it was, it was very well attended, it was nice to see all your classmates that came, I wish I could have seen that, I'd like to see that. That is it? Thank you.
Oh.
I just want to echo that, the Ronald Randall Field dedication was wonderful, Mr. Kearney, great job, Mr. Roy did a great job, too, well done, the master of ceremonies. It was really nice to be a part of that, so I appreciate the invite. Karen, you mentioned something about recycling at the high school, how they don't do it. I think that's something that the student government can get involved in, so if, if we, I think maybe you and I, can maybe talk about getting those kids involved, I think they can make that change. What you're, you're saying is maybe the maintenance doesn't want to do it, well, if the student government steps in, maybe the kids can put something together and kind of push the adults to, to get on board here. This is a 30-year initiative in our country, this is nothing new. So I'm a little shocked to hear that, so if you want to talk about that, we can, I talked to Kurt about how to, how to get in touch with the BOE about that.
Well, I'm nobody to talk to about recycling. I'm bad at it.
Sandy Oszewski.
Yeah.
With the Seymour lumber, that, that situation is unacceptable, so I don't know what's going on, I don't know why there's always a hang-up, a, a problem. I think townspeople are starting to think the Koch family isn't as dedicated to getting this thing down as most of the taxpayers. So I'd like to voice my frustration with that, and those of the constituents I talk to, because it's, it's really an eyesore in our community, and it needs to come down. So we need to hire another company and get it done. That would be my advice to the Koch family. It's time.
That's it, you're on time.
Thank you. Emery?
Nothing.
Nothing at all. Okay, a couple of things. Well, first, I, I want to address the, I agree with everybody, I thought the ceremony for Ronald Randall was really good, it was well done. Everybody that showed up, we had a lot of groups from around the valley that were there, but again, I just want to apologize again to Paul, I did it that day, but I want to apologize again publicly. I screwed up, Paul wanted to come up and speak on behalf of the class, I got confused, I had him come up to speak and do a thing for Congresswoman Delora, so he didn't get a chance to speak, so I just want to apologize again to you and, and to your classmates for that was a, a screw-up on, on my part, so I wanted to publicly say that. Now, to address the ADA issue for, Mike and I'll be very careful with this, in speaking with the attorney at the Department of Justice, everyone that got a letter also received some information as to the compliance for ADA. She asked that everyone read that, be aware of it, and understand the need for proper ADA compliance.
Okay.
Is that okay? The town is doing its part to comply with ADA compliance, we're going to spend about $100,000 in our downtown this year, having our downtown become more compliant, so we hope that businesses follow our lead and do what they can within their abilities.
I hope so, it's a 24-year-old federal law, we need to do something, it's okay.
And that's all I'll say on that. So, unless I get a pen thrown at me by town council. So, any other comments, questions, Rich? Anything you'd like to add? Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Anne Marie, second by Nicole. Is there any further discussion?
It was pretty slow.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0, close the meeting 8:31 p.m. With our sincere gratitude to you as always, Mr. Town Council.